Ms. Cottone.
Here.
Ms. Hale. Mr. Marsh.
Here.
Mr. Teeter.
Here.
Vice President Vermillion.
Here.
President Tarazi.
Here. Counsel has copies of the October 9, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. There's one item in business this evening, which is the 2024 operating budget presentation. Ms. Grandell.
Good evening, members of counsel. Tonight, we are here to present to you the preliminary operating budget for fiscal year 2024. All items discussed have been emailed to you and are also provided in your binder. Michelle will start off giving a brief overview of the 2024 budget, followed by each department going through and talking about any major changes that have developed for 2024.
Good evening, members of counsel. We are excited to present the 2024 operating budget to you this evening. We have two hours to go through this. If we need more time, we can take some time before the next council meeting as well. And also, if we can't answer any questions this evening, we'll get back to you prior to the next council meeting with follow-up as well. So I also want to start off real quick. Similar to capital budget, this operating budget is a heavy lift to put together. We had a short timeframe this year. So I particularly want to thank Jennifer Colley, Kerry Martin, and Greg Tantari from our finance team for their hard work over the last few weeks. Our whole leadership team as well, but particularly Ed Merritt and Aaron Duffy also. As you will see, they took some great efforts to put together the Wreckin' Parks Department budget this year as we move into a year where we need to start prepping for a 2025 open to the Well and the Recreation and Wellness Campus. So just wanted to say thanks upfront to all of them for that. As Jennifer mentioned, everything that's in your budget book this evening was also sent out ahead of time. The materials that you have include the budget recap, which we've sent that out every year. So that should be a document that you're familiar with. General fund, we have personnel changes, a document that states what those are, if it's addition, deletion, a move, and the reason for that or the justification for new positions. Same with Recreation and Parks Fund as well. There's a few personnel changes, both within the Recreation and Parks Fund, but then a couple of positions that will help support Recreation and Parks that are within the general fund. Recreation and Parks organizational chart, which will help as we go through what those position moves are and additional positions. Citywide organizational chart, just for your reference. There's a travel and training comparison. This is due to the fact that travel and training have been divided between supplies and materials and travel and training. And I've always wanted those grouped together for transparency. And we got to the point this year where we could do that. And then, of course, the entire draft budget. Just a couple of things I wanted to go over real briefly, and these are all within your materials. Income tax projections. So income tax makes up almost 70% of all of our revenue sources and is an important part of our operating budget as well. This just shows over time from 2013 to we have through August of 2023, our income tax trend over the years. You can obviously see an increase in withholding an individual in 2022, and that is the result of issue 22 passage. At least a portion of that increases due to that. As we look at projections for income tax in 2023, right now, we're on track for revenues of approximately $50 million, maybe a little bit over $50 million by the end of the year if we stay on track with where we are right now. And we are projecting for 2024 an income tax total revenue of $47.5 million. So we try and be conservative as we move into a new budget year to ensure if something happens out there that we're prepared and we have enough reserves available to cover any challenges that may approach us. We feel really good about where we are right now with economic development, and everything seems to be moving forward really well, but you just never know.
I was just curious why the, on the prior page, why the 2021 business account amount was so different, so much larger.
Right, so that's net profits, and it's one that you cannot really predict. And we had at least one company that has been paying into net profits and not realizing net profits, but they're keeping that balance in there. So that uptick was significant in 2021. We had one company and then some others. We always assume that a portion of that is going to be refunds as well. Great question, though. This is also in your budget book as well. This is overall revenue projections. So if you see this first arrow, this is what we projected in 2022 that we would see by the end of 2023. You know, obviously, at the end of 2023, we'll be able to give you actuals on that. And similarly, what we're projecting for 2024. Just the income tax makes up 52% of the total general fund category. We're showing just a small increase in real property tax. Shared taxes are slightly up as well. Interest earnings is another difficult one to predict. We're not really sure where the market's going to go for that. You may remember last year and the year before, that took a pretty significant downward turn. Finds permits. We have typically projected this higher than we usually realize. We took that into account this year and brought that number down. Same with fees for services. We're usually predicting somewhat higher than what we actually realized. So we looked back over the last few years and adjusted those. Any questions on that at all? Yes, Mr. Vermillion.
So at the bottom, it says 52% of total projected income taxes budgeted each year. Is the other 48% what we see under unencumbered funds?
No, so 8% goes to street maintenance. 20% goes to Recreation and Parks Fund.
Oh.
And then the remaining 20% capital. I want to make sure I'm getting my percentages added up correctly, is to capital.
So this was just referring to the general fund category?
Correct, for operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
And then this shows, again, this is in your budget book, but just revenues that we're projecting, expenditures that you're seeing requested, the general fund. There would be a surplus of $2.8 million. And then Recreation and Parks, we're showing projected revenue. Debt service, which is about $4.6 million per year for the life of that bond. Expenditures that you will see requested as part of that budget. There is a difference here, a gap of $705,000. It could be that some of this is made up during the year, assuming that revenue, income tax revenue comes in higher than what we're projecting. The Recreation and Parks budget also shows full personnel for a full year. And this is the first year we've shown that. So it's conservative on both sides. We're hoping that revenues will come in stronger. If we do need to make up that gap, we have balance in the Recreation and Parks Fund. Or if we would need to, we would go to the general fund to make up any gap there. As we get closer to, or once we open the Recreation, open the Well and the Recreation and Wellness Campus, we'll see increased revenues from memberships and programs. And we're continuing to work on that long-range pro forma that counsel's seen before. And the numbers are looking good as far as having a good balance at the end of each year. So we're continuing to work on that. We'll try and bring back another draft of that for your next council meeting. Any questions on that or any of that? If not, I think we're going to start with Recreation and Parks.
Good evening, members of counsel. I wanted to start off tonight talking about some of the changes to the organizational chart that we are proposing to make, several of which will help us in preparation of opening the Wellness Campus. Some of the largest staffing changes we have for 2024 includes moving staff from the operations department to the Recreation and Parks Department. This starts with a operations administrator that transitions into a new position of deputy director of Parks. It also includes moving one of the crews over. That includes a maintenance supervisor and four maintenance technicians that have currently been taking care of arborist activities and mowing. There are several new positions proposed this evening. The first of which is the facility manager position. We would hope to bring this individual on first quarter of '24 to help us prepare for the new Recreation and Wellness Center. This position will be responsible for management and oversight of the daily and long-term operations of our facility. Next position we would propose, excuse me, would be the fitness and corporate wellness recreation supervisor. We would propose to bring this individual on in the fourth quarter. This individual would be responsible for the effective fitness floor management, including classes and related staffing for that area, personal training, group exercise, the equipment, and things of that nature, as well as helping us with David Meadows and his staff working with our corporate members here in the community. Next position is the reclassification of our front desk coordinator position. We're proposing to reclassify that to a facilities and front desk operations recreation supervisor position. In order to prepare for the new facility, it's necessary to reclassify this position to a recreation supervisor level due to the facility's size and magnitude of their responsibilities. So that's one of the proposals. Also, new support positions. And the other directors, I'm sure, will talk about their specific positions, but include for the community relations department in the second quarter, a marketing administrator to help with this project. For the information technology department in the third quarter, it includes an IT administrator. And then in 2025, for our HR department, includes the addition of a specialist. Also proposed in future years. We talked about the HR specialists. There's a couple that isn't on this list. Includes two additional maintenance techs, possibly in '25, as well as an additional programming recreational supervisor and possibly a business manager in '26. And those are positions that will be reevaluated as we get closer, and especially once we're open with the facility, to see exactly what our needs are as we move into the future.
Just one note on the deputy director of Parks. That would be Andy Baer, which I know some of you are familiar with and have worked with. So he would move from operations, and that would be reclassified, a promotion for him. I don't think he would take offense to being called the tree guy.
Yes, he does exceptionally well. So next, looking at the total department budget. One of the things that you'll notice is that we've split this budget into five specific areas. And what we're doing is we're looking at separating each of the operating budgets to begin and establish to understand cost recovery of the department's operation and work functions. And it's effectively to give you guys a better picture of where the funds are going to and how much it costs in preparation for the new facility to come online. These five areas include an administration budget. It includes a budget for the community center, one for parks, special events, and outdoor aquatics. From there, I'll give you highlights of some of the large changes to our budget. Obviously, we've got a lot going on with all the different personnel changes. But the largest increase that we see is in personnel, and that's slightly over $1.3 million to include the transfers of the deputy director position, as well as the crew, the maintenance supervisor, and four techs. It also includes the new positions of facility manager, recreation supervisor for the fitness and corporate wellness, as well as increases we see to insurance costs, part-time wages, and lifeguard wages. One of the things I do want to make note of is that for this upcoming summer, we're proposing to add a second campsite, working in conjunction with the Hilliard City Schools. So we're excited about that, but that is also a pretty good chunk of change that we have to budget for in advance for staffing for that. Also, for supplies and materials, we see an increase of over $33,000. And these come from increases in uniforms. With the addition of programs and activities, we've seen an increase in credit card fees with the revenues that we've been bringing in, as well as increases to program expenses and tuition. Next, we have contractual services that is just under $180,000 increase. And we see this from increased cost to special events, including Freedom Fest. We've had to increase our program instructor budget to continue to bring additional programming in. And then also saw an increase in Rita fees due to the revenues that we're bringing in from the income tax. Utilities, we see an increase just over $60,000. And then other refunds increase in just over $200,000, just under $210,000 due to tax refunds related to our income tax increase. So total department, we see an increase of just over $1.8 million with all the different changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Obviously, this is a lot to take in.
All right, thanks. Great presentation. Super exciting. When will our new soccer fields begin bringing in revenue?
That is a great question. Right now, they're slated to open possibly in the second half of '24. We have about 40% of the fields in seed right now. We hope to have the remainder by the end of this week. So a lot of it just comes down to the growing seasons.
Okay, so potentially before the Well actually opens? That's awesome. And then second question is, do our summer camps break even financially?
We always exceed cost recovery for our summer camps. So after we take into account staffing and supplies and contractual costs, we typically see over 100% cost recovery for camps. And it usually subsidizes other program areas then.
Very cool. Thanks.
Important matters. Fireworks. What's our budget for fireworks?
For just the fireworks themselves?
Shooting them up in the air.
Is just slightly over $42,000 this year.
Is that longer than last year, or is it going to be the same?
It'll be similar. I know we're in the process of working those contracts out with the company that we utilize. Last year, we had to add a little additional fees to get a similar product from the year before. And we basically tried to entice them to give us a little bit of better show. I thought the show last year was pretty nice. So we're looking at something very similar, if not better.
So Ed, I know you can squeeze two nickels and make it a quarter, just working with you over the years. But that is one of the funnest things, is the fireworks. And that was really good. There's a huge difference between the year before and last year. So whatever we got to spend, we need to do it to do that. I don't want to jump into your sandbox, but that's a beauty, as we're good.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a couple of questions. So I see four new hires, basically, next year for Wreckin' Parks and a bunch of people jumbling around. Is that correct? The net is four new? The blue are new?
Yeah, it's two, actually, for next year. The two maintenance techs will be in '25.
Okay, so the two over there, those are 2025?
Yep, just the reshuffle for Andy's position in the maintenance tech.
And one's coming on first Q and one's coming on fourth Q, right? Rec supervisor's coming on fourth Q, fourth quarter, right?
Yes, sir.
So does your budget show for the full year for the rec supervisor or just one quarter?
Just one quarter.
Knew you'd say that. I just had a feeling. That's perfect. I do have some general questions that I'd like to ask finance. I have the floor. Could we get a copy of the projected unencumbered for 2023? What it's going to be year-end, unencumbered balances from the funds?
Yes, we can give you that. Do you want it as a specific date? Do you want to wait till longer term in the year for more things to be encumbered?
Whatever. You guys are pretty close to year-end anyway. Whatever you feels good. I also like the charts for... I'm really good, chief, police chief. Can we get your chart and the chart for operations, too? Because we don't have those. We got Ed's, but we didn't get the charts attached for building standards, engineering, planning, transportation, police, and operations. Because it says on this big chart. Do we have those, or can we get those?
We do. We were just using that top one as a reference. And Wreckin' Parks had significant changes, so that's why we showed you that one. But yeah, we can make that whole.
And what I'm trying to back into, Michelle, is total number of hires for 2024 versus what we've got on staff for 2023. I'd like to see the global picture, if I could. I'm kind of hand-backed into it for each department with what I've got. But I'd like to confirm, like, I just got clarity from Ed. It's not four, it's two, actually.
Well, you have the personnel changes, the two documents that show all the personnel changes. So if you look on general fund personnel, that's general fund changes. And then if you look at Wreckin' Parks personnel, that's all the new positions moves. We don't have the org chart set up like this that will show you visually those additions or moves.
So can you just give me a total, then? Can you tell us, as a counsel, total number of new hires '24 versus '23?
Sure, I'll have that for you here in a minute.
Okay. And then the other thing I'd like from finance is a CAFR from 2022 and a CAFR today, so I can see where we've come over the last three or four years. And part of that is because, I'll be honest with you, and I'm still processing. I'm kind of in shock because we're going to bump this budget up 9.5%, and that gives me the shakes, but I think a lot of it is necessary. I just need to process through it, okay? So it's just me, because I've been here too long, probably, or the longest. And that's, anybody that's sitting behind you has never seen 9.5% year-over-year increase. That's for sure. So it's just something I need to process and understand where the flows are going and where the money's going. And I know that finance can help me with that. And yeah, that Excel spreadsheet of the new hires for '23 versus '24, some format that I can see who's being hired where and what department.
All that is in these two personnel documents. It shows everything that's new. So unless you want, unless all of counsel wants to see it in a different format...
Well, if you don't want to give it to me, that's fine. I understand.
It's all in these two documents. And throughout the budget, you can see it in each department, so.
So how many is it?
Pause to get somebody else to make...
Sure, no problem. Go ahead. Keep going.
Not a question. I just wanted to say, my daughter-in-law guided this past summer, and she was so thrilled when she got her little packet. You know, you guys were giving out those little extra packet things. And anyway, it was a fun thing for the kids, and I think you did a really great job for the seasonal lifeguard, so thank you.
Mr. Carrier, the short-term answer for you is 11 new positions in 2024 across all departments, three in 2025, projected as of right now, and two for 2026.
And that gets the rec center open and everything?
No, we just did total, like, top level in '25, '26 to go into this budget packet. There will be additional seasonal and part-time for the Well to fully become open in 2025. So these are kind of high-level, what's going to happen for the next three.
So it was 11 next year?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Anything else? The hot seat.
Fireworks, Ed, fireworks.
Well, good evening, members of counsel. This is the Public Safety Division of Police operating budget. First off, I want to mention that this projections for our operating budget includes proposed changes to our police contract with Norwich Township. Prior to my hire, it appeared from the onset that the township contracted for one car 24 hours a day, which needed four officers to operate that on a daily basis, 24/7. That was, that car was kind of dedicated to the township and would travel, if there was a call in the township, to the different parts of the township to respond to that call, unless it was an emergency, then we would send the closest car. Since that time, the division has adopted a quadrant area that we have parts of the city divided into four areas. And each one of those areas has a township, some geographic land in it for the township. So we utilize those four cars to respond to calls for service as opposed to one dedicated car. With all of that being said, service to the township has not diminished any. It actually probably has increased because those cars patrol the township and the city equally when they're in those quadrants. And in response to that, we're able to price out three officers as opposed to four. So there is a cost reduction in the cost of that contract for the township. And we'll be sending that to the township and to all of you to take a look at. So that does include, our projections do include that change. In addition to personnel changes, contractual raises, one addition on the personnel side is the request to hire a full-time crime analyst. This is kind of a force multiplier for the Division of Police. This individual, it's not a sworn officer, but kind of would wear two hats. One is to provide information to officers, to our citizens, our community, and to me, basically, to help understand where crimes are occurring, any trends that are going on, so we can... to help understand where crimes are occurring, any trends that are going on, so we can direct resources to to address those issues. The second thing that they do is assist detectives with investigations. There are some some tasks detectives do that don't need a sworn member to complete. Research on social media, being able to do analytical work on information we receive from a cell phone examination or a computer and a crime analyst can help us with all those. So I believe getting this person on board will help us be more effective utilizing the resources that we have. Outside of personnel costs, the the one issue that is of significant increase is about a seven percent increase in our dispatching contract with NREC, City of Dublin. That's about a seventy-one thousand dollar increase over last year to this year for our nine-one-one and dispatching fees. The rest of our budget, there are some pluses and minuses where we've been able to keep costs the same. Some areas we've been able to reduce, and then we have some increases, just forms and printing costs have gone up. A few of the things associated with the K-nines have increased in price. We've made some slight additions there. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Have any questions?
Chief, we had talked about SROs. Have you had any more conversations with the schools or about the SROs?
I I have not. We continue to look at the the one plan that we've kind of put out there. And again, I think that's a a viable way to address additional needs for the schools.
And they're having a working session on it too. I recently did.
Yeah, I I think I'm we're gonna, you know, I'll take some information that we get back from them and talk to Mr. Stewart and see what, you know, what's expected from that side and then come back to Michelle and to you, to this board and say, hey, here's where we are with that.
Okay. And on the K-nines, we still have three, right?
We still have three, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is the crime analyst, is that, did you say that's a full-time position?
That's a full-time position. And, you know, that's there are college degrees where folks are trying to get into that work. And I think it would be a great benefit for us.
Force multiplier, Peggy, force multiplier.
That's correct.
That's pretty cool, cool language.
Thank you much.
The Health Services budget page includes our contract with Franklin County Board of Health. And this is really two contracts that are included within this budget. One is our main contract with public Franklin County Public Health, and the other is for our mosquito contract. Our general contract is going to go up three percent this year. So it's we paid this year three hundred and fifty-six thousand. It's going to go up to about three hundred and sixty-six thousand. And then the there's about an additional twenty thousand dollar increase in here for mosquito management. And that is because they were working off of a three-year contract previously. And as they're going out to see what the costs may be for the next three years, they're significantly higher. So they've given us the heads up that that increase is coming, so we're trying to budget for that. If there aren't any questions on that, we'll move on to.
Quadruple the mosquito budget, but.
So could you go back to the little chart you had? So if our budget is four hundred thousand and projected was three eighty, so we would have saved twenty thousand. So why wouldn't we budget for four-ten and carry over the twenty? Because you said it was only going up thirty thousand?
I need to look at the projected and see if that's accurate, first of all. And then we're probably seeing an increase of about thirty-four-seven. So we'll we'll double check on that projection, but we should be close to hitting our full projection. And really, if we were fully budgeting in two thousand twenty-four, based on the numbers I'm looking at, that would need to be four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
So even though our projected is lower, we're we're thinking we'll spend fifty-four thousand more next year?
My numbers are showing thirty-four thousand six hundred more this next year.
Okay, do you see what I'm saying? Like between the three eighty, though, and if we added thirty-four to that, it would be lower than the four thirty?
Right, I'm going off of budget to budget, but I see what you're saying. Yeah, I'm just saying we need to check on the projected and make sure that with both of those existing contracts, we would be coming in closer to the four hundred.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the next area is community services, and this actually is not a department, it's an area. And this is to establish a second assistant city manager position to oversee Recreation and Parks and Operations. And really, as we've seen, obviously Recreation and Parks grows significantly and where they're headed. And then just the critical needs that operations provides for our general services to our community. Two areas where we need this type of strategic and operational leadership. Really want them to focus on best practices, fiscal resilience, environmental sustainability, resident engagement, and customer service. There's a good number of areas of overlap between especially Recreation and Parks Maintenance and Operations. And they'll be sharing some of the some of the same staff or things like snow plowing and leaf collection and those types of things. We'll still be using the staff from Recreation and Parks for a portion of that as well. So really want to get somebody in here that is thinking long-term strategy, but also looking at current operations and how can we improve efficiency and effectiveness. Also would like to find someone that could serve as a liaison to a lot of our nonprofit organizations that currently partner with Wreckin Parks to have somebody out there that's really engaging a bit more with our with our nonprofit world. So this is assuming that this individual would start early in two thousand twenty-four. Can I answer any questions you may have related to that? The budget is salary is, you know, an expected, you know, top starting salary. And then some of the other numbers are just plug numbers, really not knowing what they might need in the way of supplies, material, contract, services, and travel and training would be for a couple of professional.
Any questions or comments about this?
Mr. Grant, does other cities have two assistant city managers or is that unique to us?
No, it's it's pretty common to have multiple deputy city managers or multiple assistant city managers.
It's just a title.
It is. I mean, usually overseeing multiple departments is what you usually see.
So that's the criteria for someone to be that next level, but right behind you. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of council. Excuse me, there are five areas that are under the umbrella of community development. And I wanted to introduce the general budgetary area in your document. There are really no changes within community development. This is in this first section is funding both my own position as well as in an assistant. We have some limited funds that I just highlight for you with regard to contractual work. One is a project that is really a holdover from this year about the Main Street Electrical Substation. And the other part of that is contract work related to zoning updates that are ongoing at this point.
Good evening, members of city council. I will go over the Transportation and Mobility Division's operating budget for two thousand twenty-four. First, in terms of personnel, one unique thing for our division is that our personnel, which includes three full-time employees, are split between the general fund as well as Fund two oh two, which is a special revenue fund that we use. It's a gas tax revenue that we collect for people that buy gasoline in the City of Hilliard. A portion of that tax comes to us and a portion of that is used to fund our personnel. So the costs you see here in this chart are actually the general fund costs. And the others are split in two oh two, when you see that later on in the in the budget. There's only one minor change from a personnel standpoint for us in two thousand twenty-four from this year. Slight decrease, we're shifting an intern position that we originally funded through our division to IT slash GIS. Because the role that that person played for us this year and what we anticipate in the future is really more of a GIS function to out to mapping and information on our assets, getting that into our GIS. In terms of supplies and materials, there's really no significant change from two thousand and three. Contractual services is where you will see a significant change. First of all, contractual services in general. For us, it funds things like our contract traffic engineer, MORPC, regional planning studies, and then miscellaneous surveying, engineering, or transportation planning functions not related to a specific capital project. So one thing that's different this year from last year is we had two capital projects that we previously funded general engineering services contracts out of capital. This year, we're shifting them into the operating budget because they are not specific to a capital project. So that so our increase in contractual service is a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But a hundred and fifty of it is really a transfer from capital into operating. So these are things like our safety studies that we do, speed studies, capacity analyses, all those sorts of general functions that we do. So that's the most significant increase in our budget from for two thousand twenty-four over two thousand twenty-three. And then lastly, under travel and training, we do have a minor increase really related to professional development. We have three professional engineers in two thousand twenty-three. Only one, we did one external training opportunity for a conference. And next year, our staff plans to attend one. So that's the increase related to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has about our operating budget. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mr. Grant, can we go back to the community services one, just as I've been thinking about it? Do you have a couple of questions before the next? I'm just understanding, I guess, from two perspectives. One is is the job description. So when it says, for example, provide strategic and operational leadership to these two departments. But isn't it the job of the head of the department to provide strategic and operational leadership for that department? Like, are we downgrading essentially the head of a department under somebody else? Or how does that work exactly in terms of?
No, I think it's common to find assistant city managers that oversee multiple departments. So like within community development, there's four division directors that oversee their areas. This is similar similar to that, just putting multiple departments under an assistant city manager. You know, I think a lot of our department directors have the role of some strategic, but just daily operations as well. And this gives an additional individual that's really thinking high level and coordination between those departments.
So for example, for example, focuses on short and long-term infrastructure improvements, facility planning. Like, is this a person? I I guess it just seems unclear to me to what degree this person is getting into. Like, is how does the how do you differentiate between this person and a department director? I guess it's unclear, because it seems to me a department director would do all of these things. And then now there's somebody above the department director doing a lot of the same things. Ensure strong communication coordinate.
For example, with focus on short and long-term infrastructure improvements, facility planning and asset management, those are really critical things that are coming down the pike right now. We're looking at replacing our three-one-one system. So right now, we 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 don't have in place what I would call the best as far as long-term infrastructure improvement and planning, that asset management piece. And then facility planning, we have a lot of facility planning yet to come with looking at our current recreation center and co-locating possibly operations and parks and wreck in there, Recreation and Parks in there. So it's things like that. It's higher level. Really, you know, don't have to get involved as much in daily operations, but they can be involved in strategy, process improvement, customer service, that type of thing.
Now you got me thinking about it. Why wouldn't you just have one instead of two, operations and Wreckin Parks? Because you're already pulling a lot of people from operations to Wreckin Parks. If they're that closely aligned, why would you just not have one instead of three or two instead? You know what I mean? Instead of having, don't take this wrong way, Larry and Ed, but just have, why didn't you have one? And then one below, you know, why are we adding a third? I guess, why are we adding that middle layer? That's what I'm struggling with.
Are you saying combine Wreckin Parks and operations together?
Yeah, why wouldn't you have one leader for both of them? If their missions are aligning and their their services are aligning in a way that where it says here, it's not a department, describes the area of focus among these two departments. If the area of focus is similar, why would you have three and not just two?
There there are distinct services that operations provides as opposed to Recreation and Parks. I mean, it's street maintenance, repair, traffic signal, tack, fleet, facilities. So they're overseeing areas that are distinct from Recreation and Parks.
Okay.
Well, thank you for, I guess my only feedback is, as I read the objectives and activities, these points seem like if I was could draw a circle of what are the responsibilities of a director of operations and a director of Wreckin Park, this seems like there's a tremendous amount of overlap there. So it's just unclear to me what that particular position is distinct from those as opposed to just having a third person in the room doing what the directors should be doing. But like, I I get if there is a slice that goes on top of that, but it just feels like it's quite intra likes, at least the way it reads right now. But anyway, just feedback. We can go on.
Good evening, members of council. I'd like to summarize, excuse me, the Engineering Division's two thousand twenty-four operations budget as part of the Community Development Department. A large increase in the Engineering Division's budget is due to the addition of another staff member, a project manager for capital improvement projects specifically. This is kind of in line with our increased emphasis on asset management, on addressing aging infrastructure. And we foresee a larger capital improvements budget for particularly utilities work in the next few years. So this person would manage those type of projects from design through construction. And that is the the large increase in our budget for next year. Contractual services remain essentially the same. Our our staff is also funded from Fund two eighty-three. And that's on, I believe, page sixty-five of your handout or your manual. Fund two eighty-three is the revenues are generated through development, construction, inspection fees, and plan review fees paid by the the developers for new developments. About fifty percent of Fund two eighty-three goes to staff salaries. And then the other fifty percent is through contractual services. And those contractual services are mainly for consultants that do plan review, assistance with plan review, and with construction inspection. So I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council. I appear to be in the Building Standards Division budget as part of the Community Development Department. And our biggest change this year is in personnel, as we have removed. And our biggest change this year is in personnel, as we have removed funding for a second building inspector. We tried for two years to find an individual who was qualified for that position, did not get any takers. And we have found that currently, our current staff can handle all those inspections, and we do have a backup consultant who can fill in. We don't do that, so we eliminated the funding for that position. And that was the biggest change in our budget. Everything else is pretty much the same as it has been in the past. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone'd like any clarifications.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council. For the planning division, proposed budget, there are no proposed changes for personnel. Minor changes in supplies and materials have to do mainly with tuition reimbursement being included in there. And then the travel and training, there are some additional conferences that in the past staff has not been able to go to, mostly because of COVID and restructuring of some of those conferences. And those will be anticipated next year. Those are the two main changes. Any questions about any of those?
Okay, city manager's budget, some small changes within this. Personnel costs, the projected for 2023, just my salary increase was done after the budget was through, so that's an adjustment that's come, came through. And 2024 just assumes up to the max that other employees were given during the year, but obviously that's based on what council would decide on that. And then contractual services includes the lobbying services that we currently have as well as the consultant that we have. It's the black belt that comes in and helps us with process improvement and innovation, employee development, and black belt classes. There's also funding in here that's been in in the past year that we, we didn't do yet, but now that we have a new finance director on board, will do sometime during the year, and that's a GFOA, best practice review. So they come in and look at all policies and procedures and processes. And then there's also funding in there for staff leadership and some miscellaneous funds as well. And that is really, it, travel and training, some of that increase is due to, some of that funding was in supplies and materials previously. I can answer any questions you might have?
How much is for lobbying, Michelle?
That is $2,500 a month, so $30,000 a year.
And that's with Civic Plus?
Correct.
And you still think we're getting what we're supposed to out of them?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
I guess this one's me. Lucky you. All good. There were some slight increases, just generic increases. The community programs, there were slight increases. I think you guys got all those as far as what the results were. I sent an email out to all the norm of the AG Society Arts Council, Aging in Place, Food Pantry, and the Historical Society, and all of them came back just a little bit higher, not extreme. There were some slight increases due to branding products, and then of course, the combination of school, training, and travel. So for an overall increase of 11.4.
What's the 25 grand for, for travel and training? Are we going anywhere?
No, what it is, is they combined school and training and travel and, and, travel, correct? So we had 10 and 15. And basically what it was is, a few years ago, we put money into the travel and training in case council wanted to go to a conference where there was airfare. This was, and you guys weren't budgeting for it, so that's why that is, and it combines with mine too, so it's me and council. So if you want to go to National League of Cities where it's an airfare plus hotel plus all that kind of stuff.
Anybody else?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, members of council. I'm going to present the clerk of court budget for 2024. There are minimal increases for the clerk of court. There are no personnel changes. There is a slight increase in the contractual services due to the fact that this year Mayor's Court added a contract public defender. 2023 was kind of a test period. It has worked really well for the defendants that show up in Mayor's Court having access to a public defender. And so therefore, it is going to be fully funded, this contract service, through the clerk of court budget. The travel and training increase is just due to the fact of certain monies from supplying materials was joined with the travel budget. I'm here to answer any questions.
Everybody's happy with public defenders.
Oh, and I apologize, I should add on the front page org chart you received, the clerk of court position was vacant, listed as vacant. We actually had our new clerk of court begin her job today, so that position is no longer vacant.
Who is it?
It's Wendy Greasimer. We're very excited to have her.
Oh, cool.
And I'm just going to sit here in case for a lot of people, is there any questions?
Depending on the questions. I'm here to present to you the legal budget. There is no change in personnel. We do have a change in funding though. The program coordinator for the recovery court will now be funded under the general fund. We were getting that through grants previously. We have also expanded that coordinator's job to include meeting the needs of the community related to youth diversion and adult recovery education plans and diversion. We are applying for grants in January that may help, that may help alleviate some of those costs. The other increase you'll see is related to contractual services. That's due to expected increases in special counsel work related to zoning code reviews as a result of the community plans implementation. And there's also some collective bargaining that needs to be finalized with USW and also to defend any ongoing lawsuits or new lawsuits that would not be covered through insurance. But that is not, you know, etched in stone needed, but it's budgeted as a safety measure so we don't have to continually come back and appropriate money. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I could be wrong, but maybe it's there and I'm just not thinking of it as much. Do we get any kind of a notice as to litigation that is covered by insurance or not? Because I know often you say, well, this is going to cover by insurance, but I don't recall, these are not covered by insurance.
I generally send out like a letter. Every time we get sued, we will send it to insurance for evaluation to either say that they will insure it and cover it with council, whether they're covered under reservation or rights, meaning they don't think it's covered, but they still will pay for the coverage. And then other times, there will be, there is no coverage for the type of suit it is, and the city would have to pay for that out of their own pockets.
I get that that's the case.
And we send that letter out to council then. Yeah, so you guys know when that's going on and happy to share. I mean, there haven't been that many in the last year or so, so.
Maybe that's why I'm not remembering.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we've had one this year that we've sent to insurance. Well, we had the one, Public Records, but insurance said it wasn't covered. And I know we got that out to you, but I'm not sure if there's been any others. I don't recall any this year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening again, members of council. The finance budget this year has very minimal changes. Personnel is slightly down. We, however, are fully staffed, so we don't anticipate any variance. Supplies and materials slightly up. I'm creating a finance library, if you will, in my office of learning tools and materials for my staff. Contractual services is staying the same. Travel and training is slightly increased, again, due to the pulling all travel and training into one line. I'm also working on some development of staff and providing them the opportunity for additional trainings to develop further in their careers. And miscellaneous expenses are mainly auditor fees, things of that nature. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council. For economic development, there were changes primarily for two reasons. One, under supplies and materials, we added in a section to pilot for next year some funding for downtown amenities. So if we want to have like big graduation letters or 3D print something cool to kind of add some, to attract more people to our downtown area, we have some funding built into this category for that. And then under contractual services, we increased some funding in here for implementation of the economic development strategy. So some areas that we're going to be focusing on in 2024 are going to be workforce development priorities.
All right, any questions? I thought we'd get a lot of questions for you, but apparently.
Good evening. The human resources department contains items that would relate to recruitment, retainment, and engagement. In 2024, we're removing a vacant part-time HR generalist position. Instead, we're requesting an intern who would work in the summer, help with onboarding seasonals, and also be assigned special projects. In 2025, as Ed Mayer mentioned, with the community center opening, the department would be requesting at that time a full-time HR specialist. The, our majority of the budget remains the same with just a few small increases, one being increasing our advertising budget slightly. We have talked about proposed new positions in 2024, and this would help us advertise on external sites. And then lastly, the travel and training budget, budget line items were combined for 2024. So the amounts requested are the same, they're just combined. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council. Three major increases for facilities for the operations department. The first is supplies and materials. We're seeing an increase in our building maintenance, supplies and materials, so we're proposing an increase of $13,000 in that area. The largest increase in this budget is with a solid waste contract. The city's current five-year solid waste program ends next summer. Staff has been looking at consortium contracts within the region. This increase is based on current market rates. It also provides for fuel surcharge as well as increased container costs that we're seeing as our containers age. With, with this, we would look at a two, roughly a $2 per household increase to support this level. And then the last item is what we're seeing with the utility increases at our city buildings. So that 10% accounts for items that we're seeing in the billing. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Larry, I, I would have expected that the utilities would gone down. We're saving 40% on our electric bills, but this shows the electric bills are going up. I mean, didn't we go to electrical aggregation and lower our rates 40%, something like that? You're giving me a blank stare. I guess what I'm saying is, is you're saying to me the utilities are going up, that we hadn't locked them in a lower rate?
And I'll, I'll have to look at the billing on that. So we have converted many of the city buildings to LED lighting, and we're continuing that effort.
I thought through aggregation, we'd have got a reduction. That's what I'm saying. So if we didn't, we didn't, but clearly you're going up 60 grand almost, right? Or 50 grand, it looks like 55, 56,000. Thought we'd have got, captured some savings with the aggregation program, but maybe not. I don't know.
We'll, we'll take a look at that. We have a separate plan, aggregation plan for our buildings, and we'll check those rates again and get back to you and make sure that those are accurate.
Just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
On the, I'm sorry, Larry. I had a question on the trash bill. How, how much of that is recovered by, by what we as residents pay for the trash collection?
This program is fully funded, budget neutral.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, members of council. You'll notice our increase in a personnel cost of 15%, and that is the addition of two personnel. One, an IT administrator that would be brought on board in the third quarter of next year to help facilitate the fit and finish of the well, bringing that new technology online that, that will help operate that facility. The second personnel change is the intern that we're moving over from transportation and mobility that Director Shampin mentioned. We've utilized those, that personnel in GIS, and we just thought it was a better fit to bring them over to ours department. The other additional increase is in contractual services, and all of that increase is a result of 2023 CIP. So software that we purchased that was approved under the 2023 CIP, the bill is due in 2024 to keep those licenses, and, and so that's where you see that increase. Open any questions? Did you have it this time? Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. In the community relations budget, there are a couple items of note. Number one is the new position, marketing administrator, as Mr. Mayer had mentioned. This person would start mid-year, probably in July. And this is sort of a different position for the city and for our department as that the primary duties of this person wouldn't really be public relations responsibilities, but would be more to create and execute marketing initiatives that result in sale and promotion of programs, services, memberships, events, and other products for the city of Hilliard, primarily in support of the rec and parks department with the well opening up. So, so basically to summarize that, the well is a very different product from, from anything else the city does in that it is a product that needs to be sold. This person will be coming on board to develop the programs, the marketing materials and programs and things like that, and working with Ed and his team on the products they create and analyzing that sort of thing to basically sell that product. In terms of contractual services, you'll see a little bit of a change there. This change reflects a one-time expense to develop a web presence for the well, which would be different and separate from the city's website, but it is one-time expense basically to develop sort of a vibrant website presence that reflects the, the excitement and the movement and everything that the well is providing. There also are some funds earmarked for an external consultant to support the economic development efforts, particularly in areas that go beyond Hilliard. We're really, really good at developing the collateral and working in Hilliard and that, but we feel like there's some benefit in bringing in somebody who can help us reach more of a national audience with the economic development messages. So we've put a little bit of money into the budget for that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mandatory question time. No?
Okay, thank you very much.
Why should, if this person is going to be there to promote the well, is that, what percentage of their job is that, is that going to be?
It's going to be 100% of the job. Their, their, their work basically will be to come up with the programs and the marketing initiatives and the publicity and the collateral material and probably a lot of the website content that would be developed to basically sell the well as a product, because we know we're going to have, we're going to need to really step up our efforts to sell memberships. Right now, that comes out of our department, but it's not really a marketing effort so much as it is just a general public relations effort we included in your Hilliard, we have it on the website and things like this. But a marketing person would be able to come in and help us and help Ed's team and, you know, for example, work with economic development to maybe develop specific products geared toward our corporate community. So maybe corporate membership programs and things like this. The person would be able to come in and help hopefully develop and help Ed's team look at the products that they're selling in terms of classes and programs and things like that and find, determine maybe what's missing, what kind of things would the marketplace like to see, for example? You know, what would Hilliard residents like to see in terms of programming and things like that? The person also would, you know, obviously help with sales in aquatics, would help in sales with, you know, various different things for the.
I guess where I was kind of going with it is I got that that's a needed role. I guess I'm just not clear that if everything to do with the well is under the park and rec department, why would the one person responsible for selling it be under a different department? Why not be all under one department?
Because the, the skill set for this person is a lot more specialized and comes a lot closer to what the public relations department does than what programmers and recreation folks tend to, to have.
We, we had this conversation internally and sort of debated back and forth what the best place would be for this individual position and has to work very closely with both recreation and parks staff and community relations, but a lot of the services are coming out of community relations, and the rest of David's staff has to work really closely with this individual to make sure that those, you know, whether it be a video or website design or brochure development. So at the end of the day, we'll, we'll see how, we think this is the right fit, but if it's not, then we can always come back and say, hey, we're going to move this position into recreation and parks.
Right, because I, I could imagine the person might feel like they're reporting to two people, you know?
Well, and we have discussed that as well. And, and we wanted the person to know who, like who they're reporting to ultimately at the end of the day, but I'm going to be working very closely with Ed and with Aaron, I think, on identifying priorities for this individual and sort of tracking and monitoring what they're doing. Certainly, once the well opens, this person probably actually will work out of that building as opposed to out of City Hall, just because being there and being able to work directly with staff and, and again, helping them identify, you know, products to sell basically is a, you know, it's a, it's a, a lot of that would be dialogue and working with programmers to do that.
Thank you. First of all, any other questions?
I've turned my green light on. Yes, sorry. That brings up a question in my mind. Have we decided if we're going to allow people outside of Hilliard or the Hilliard City Schools to be members of the well? Have we made that call yet, or is that, it sounds like this role's going to be marketing some of that?
We, we will have, well, we'll bring back to council what those tier of memberships may be, but in order to support the well, yes, we would market both memberships and programs to Hilliard proper school district and, and beyond.
See, and my concern with that is, and then we've got people outside that aren't paying the taxes for the well, the one, competing for services from the well. So I think we got, I think we really ought to take a strong look at that and understand.
You structure programming availability first to residents.
Oh, okay.
And then to school district and then beyond, so hopefully to fill up, you know, any offering that you may have, but it would be first given to residents.
Okay. Just, it just came to my mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, since I did so well on the last one, they're going to let me do a second one. So on the boards and commissions, as you can see that the, under supplies and material, it'll be $29,000. There's an increase between, $5,000 was increased for the volunteer appreciation items, since they're no longer getting paid, so we've increased that line item. The ESC has a slight increase of 1,850, and then the arts commission is, remains the same for a total of 29,000. And then the $10,000 for travel and training, again, that comes side by side with the appreciation stuff. We've never really paid for training for any of the boards and commission members, so we thought $10,000 would give them an opportunity to attend any training that, that would be relevant to their boards and commissions. I'm limited on my answers, but go ahead. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Good evening, members of council. On the general government budget, there's two, two, two increases that I want to note. Under materials and supplies, there's an increase of 19,000. That's due mostly due to increases in memberships. Added a couple, and there's been an increase in some of the memberships we're currently in. But the big increases in, under income tax refunds, the city knows about a large expected corporate income tax refund, and that's coming, coming on next year, so we're budgeting for that, anticipating that refund.
If you have any questions, happy to answer. Any questions? Questions?
Fund the one that we've spread out over a number of years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of council. One increase in this fund, 202, under contract services, you'll see $50,000 there. This is for additional curb and asphalt repairs throughout the city that are not covered under the SMRP. So these are smaller repairs that happen outside of streets that are scheduled for resurfacing. Also, a part of these dollars will be set aside for curb inlet rebuilds throughout the city. Some of those we do in-house. The more detailed work is contracted. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Fund 203, one notable increase in gasoline of $25,000. So this includes not only gas and diesel, but as well as our fuel additives and also testing that happens at the station to make sure that our, our fuel is clean, we have no water or other contaminants in the fuel. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Water maintenance, one notable increase under supplies and materials, $32,000. That increase is for additional costs that we're seeing for fire hydrant parts. There's been an escalation in, in parts and also availability. We work with Norwich Township to maintain fire hydrants throughout the city. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Larry, does that include painting those things blue? Are we, how, we're, we're getting close. I see a lot of them are painted, but some of them are still. How much, how many more we got?
That does include, I, I would have to look at our program. I can get you that update. We schedule that out on a five-year program.
So it's over five years? Okay.
Yeah, this is mainly for the rebuild parts.
Okay.
One increase in 206 for $10,000. That is for additional costs that we're seeing for lift station pump parts due to inflation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
And no increases in Fund 269.
That kind of wraps up all of the department-level explanations for budget increases or decreases. Happy to answer any further questions at this time and/or between now and the readings.
All right. Any questions going around the room?
So I just have a general question, and I think it was kind of similar to the one I asked Ms. Grandal earlier. So like going back to the sewer revenue fund, the one we just did, because that's the closest one. So the projected budget is lower than what was actually budgeted, but then there's only a 10% or, I'm sorry, a $10,000 increase. But so we go off, do we always go off of the initial budget instead of like what the actual budget was?
Well, I think the best answer to that is when we do the projected numbers for budget presentation purposes, we are projecting through September off of actuals and then annualizing for the fourth quarter. If anything is not listed and or showing or encumbered with us until the fourth quarter of the year, we don't have that number included. So sometimes the variance, when you look at the projected column, might be a little off. We do our best guess in terms of the projections throughout the end of the year, but sometimes there are unencumbered funds that, that hit those, those areas, so that's why there is a variance.
Sure. And so then if we do have, you know, savings at the end of the year, does that go into capital? Does it go back into operations? Does it go to unencumbered? What happens to that extra?
I think that mainly goes with what, what that department's trying to do. Do they need to roll over encumbrances for the beginning of the year, things of that nature? It's not necessarily an automatic rollover.
So they may have a contract that carries over two years, but they haven't encumbered all of it, so that might carry over. But anything that's unspent and unencumbered rolls back into the general fund as unbudgeted and unencumbered. So it's available then for the next year for budget purposes. Could be operating budget, or if, if the fund is in good shape, like we've done the last few years, we've brought additional funds from the general budget over to capital to cover some of the costs.
Okay. And then so, like if there is savings in the park and rec department, would any of that ever go to pay off our debt burden early, or is that pretty much just set with whatever the bond is?
We'd have to talk to our financial advisor team to see if paying off any of that debt is, is the wisest choice or not. And then I think we have a lot of other capital needs in wreck and parks right now, so I think it would probably go towards that before paying off the debt early.
Yeah, agreed.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? One quick thought, not to beat the horse too much. The, when you have objectives and activities under here, is that the same thing as duties and responsibilities from like a job, job duty requirement?
It is similar, yes. It, it may be objectives and activities of the department and maybe not. So when, if you're looking back at the community services again, that's more sort of job duties, expectations. Some of them are department sort of duties and expectations, so not of a specific position.
Right, because it could be like what your, there is a distinction between the objectives of a department versus the duties of a job. So I, just so that at least my feedback is clear, when I read like, for example, the duties and responsibilities of assistant city manager positions, it's written, like there's, and I'm not going to belabor the details, but it, it feels like this is not written exactly like what an assistant city manager, like it could be improved in terms of focus, because right now it still reads like a director of a department from one perspective. So I'm just giving.
And hopefully, the actual job description that we write lays out what the duties and responsibilities are in a clear manner to be able to.
Right, so I figured it'll be fixed once we get to that point, and that's what I was thinking when I was reading this, is I was thinking of it in those terms. That's maybe why there was a little bit of a difference perspective.
Appreciate that feedback.
Thanks. Anything else?
Omar, I'd, I'd just like to thank the administration and staff for all the work on this. This process is so much better than it used to be, and it's clearer and more transparent, easier to understand, more organized, and it just makes this process so much better. So thanks to everybody.
Thanks. It gets, it gets better and better every year, so it's.
So, last chance. No other comments, questions? Good job, everyone. We finished half an hour early. You actually suggested we'd come back and do it again. It's at the beginning of all that.
I just didn't know, and I wanted council to know to take the full two hours if you need them, and we can, we can add on additional time at the next one, but we got through it, so thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain, since we're done at this point, I would entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. This meeting is now adjourned.